Great, well, thanks for reserving an additional session for some visioning. So Jonathan is going to continue along with Sonia and Fiona to guide the way. Do you want to set up the evening's events?
Yeah, yeah, so thank everyone for entertaining this visioning process on stakeholder engagement. So just wanted to recap, provide some context, and then turn it over to Fiona and Sonia to lead the entire process. But I just wanted to recap where we are with this whole visioning process. So we have confirmed the dates for the Guiding Coalitions, the three sets of Guiding Coalitions. They should be on your calendars, I sent a calendar invite. So those are there. The only thing that's missing is the times might shift by an hour or two, so I just wanted to put kind of a general timeframe in there. But anyways, so those are on your calendar, as well as the timeframe for when we expect to do community engagement. So those should be on your calendar as well. We are actively working on the Guiding Coalition, narrowing down the list that you all have seen. And so, obviously, that's going through a couple versions of iteration before it gets presented to the Board for final approval and then we're able to send out those invitations. So again, you'll hear more from us in a few days on where we are with that narrowing down the list. So those are the two main areas. And the third thing, which is the thing that we're talking about today, is stakeholder engagement, particularly, you know, the broader community outside of the Guiding Coalition. And so, we're going to go through a series of conversations and activities to get your best thinking about how we best do stakeholder engagement. We've had the opportunity to meet with many in the community around what they have thought, you know, works. As an example, this afternoon, we had a chance to meet with folks over at the Portland Bureau of Transportation who've done really incredible work around community engagement and ensuring that all voices are really at the table, both from, you know, kids to senior citizens and everything in between, different languages. And so it was really interesting to learn a lot about what they've done, especially around safe routes to school. And so, again, we're getting a sense of some of the things that have worked and some of the things that we need to watch out for, especially as we engage our most underserved communities and ensure that our students are front and center in many of the conversations. So, again, we've been doing some homework, but really want to hear from you all as Board members and as senior leaders as well. This is probably one of the few opportunities we get to be with all of you in the same room around, you know, stakeholder engagement. So with that, I'll turn it over to Fiona and Sonia to lead us through some of the process.
All right, great, thank you. So what we're going to start with tonight is, actually, we're going to start with a question for each of you, each of you at the table. So some of you may be rethinking your seating choices right now, but it's too late. So each person at the table, we'd love to just hear from you, what was your best experience of a community engagement process? And that could be one that you've taken part in, or one that you've witnessed in some other way. And it may be something that was completely successful, and you can tell us about that. Or it may be something that wasn't ultimately successful, but had a piece in it that was really, really good. So I want you to think about that just for a moment, and tell us what the process was, who was involved, and what was it that you had identified as being something that worked particularly well about that process and why? Okay? So what it was about, who was involved, what worked particularly well, and why? And while you're thinking about that, I'm just going to ask Sonia to tell us what she's going to be doing tonight, because I think she has a confession to make.
Confession or a warning. So I am going to be just taking some notes, just so that we don't have to sort of do it on flip chart, but also can be a little bit more comprehensive. And I feel like I can also be engaging with you to make sure that I captured your thoughts correctly. Unfortunately, I have to sit over here because the cord is about three feet long, because they're on the corner at first, but we couldn't quite reach. I mean, the confession or the warning is, I actually don't know how to turn off notifications on Facebook. I don't usually do Facebook, but yesterday was my son's 21st birthday, so I actually posted something, like a baby picture. So now everybody's like, "Congratulations." And I'm like, "Shoot, I'm getting all these, like, Facebook notifications."
We'll look for them.
I realized I didn't know how, like, a few minutes ago. Are you coming over here to help me?
Okay.
Oh, congratulations, Governor, that's what that is about, so I apologize.
All right, so now you all feel on this side of the table that you will have to turn around every time you hear that ping.
You're going to try to turn the volume off.
Okay, so just sort of briefly, I'd like to hear from you about this, these best experiences you've had of community engagement. And I think we'll just go around the table, and maybe somebody would like to volunteer to start. Thank you.
Voices that typically have been disenfranchised, I think it's a good process when they're heard as well, and somehow there's a way to capture their thoughts and feelings versus the usual suspects.
Is there a particular example that you've sort of been through or heard about or witnessed that makes you think that they did that?
Yeah, I'm thinking of a community process where I merged schools, and I heard from family members that typically wouldn't show up, but at the same time wanted to voice their support for improving outcomes for their kids.
Yeah, yeah, great, thank you. All right, can we just, Nick?
Yeah, I'd have to say, I think when the community is leading it, I think when the community has more power to lead the discussion or the event that's going on, I think that gives them more of an opportunity to speak truly on what they really care about and the matters that are being discussed, so.
Okay, so say a little bit more about that leading process, so what are you thinking about?
Well, I think that it's like the space is like open to community members to talk about what they want to talk about. You know, there can be some, like, guiding questions, or maybe the event has a specific team, but I think when there's less pressure and like, for the people who are like moderating it, or the entity that's like, you know, in control, but I think when they take a step back and let the community have more time to give them information, I think that's really important.
Thank you. Fiona?
So I'm going to kind of add on to what our superintendent shared. When you have families who you haven't typically heard from, and you create a process where they get to come again and again, we, when I had that opportunity to be in that space, they become more comfortable participating, but also those who are facilitating and holding the space learn more about how, what makes it work for them.
Right, so sort of setting up an expectation that this is an invitation that comes back again and again, and there's time to, there's not just a one opportunity.
And I would add that one of the things that makes that work, that I've seen as a consistent theme, is personally calling people. Like, getting an invitation for someone who knows them, like the principal of the school or a teacher, and maybe even coming with them the first time.
Right, great, thank you.
So one community event that I thought was particularly successful was on the bond. I think it had to do with the Second Bond, and it was with Apano, Asian Pacific American Network for Oregon. And instead of having the consult, it was an information session and to get feedback on the bond, and instead of having the consultants run the meeting, they turned it over to Apano, and they got a really big turnout. And, I mean, they just did little things, like they had food that the community wanted, would want to eat. And I was surprised at how interactive they were. It just worked really well. People really opened up, and we got a lot of good information. And I think it was critical that we just let them, let Apano do it the way they knew would bring people in and have them be expressive, so.
Great, thank you. Julie?
Similarly, so in other states, we had a lot of success with second language parents when we would do things like, I mean, particularly with the political climate now, make sure that the activities were not on school property. It was actually some community space where they felt safe, there was also access to public transportation. Childcare needed to be provided. Food was always an issue. So just making it really inclusively comfortable for the family, because a lot of our, you know, childcare certainly an issue, and people being authentically kind of co-leaders from the community. Obviously, language is an issue, but, I mean, I think the space, just the fact that even though it may be school-related, was in kind of a safe place to the community. We also had notices in the community stores, you know, the businesses that the community frequents.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I think probably the process that came up with the 2012 bond package wasn't perfect, but it was way better than anything else. And I think what made it work was that it was run by the community. It was, to the extent that PPS backed off and let, it actually, I mean, I think it actually produced a remarkably good bond package.
Well, the conventional system for the district was that you can't possibly go out one year after the voters just rejected it. In the community, we said, "Yes, you can if you have a better package."
Yeah.
One thing I was thinking about is how important it is not to have preconceived ideas, and I was thinking about a process I was a part of with my former employer where they had gone through a community needs assessment about developing a new program that was going to focus on services for people coming out of incarceration. So all that kind of programmatic work had been done, but then when we got the community together, so people who had just been released, or even people who were about to be released, there was no preconceived ideas about, okay, we're going to have this reentry transition center, what services are we going to provide? And a lot of the, a lot of what came out of that were, you know, so much more elemental than people had thought of. Like, you can't do anything until, I can't do anything until somebody helps me get a driver's license, and that's not easy if you don't have any identification that, you know, so things like that. So just, you know, opening up a process with no preconceived ideas was what I really came away from that with.
Right, great, so that sort of links to what Nick was saying, is about sort of keeping a very open frame, even if we have some specific things that are questions or in mind or something. I just want to loop in Liz and Craig at the back here, so.
You thought you were going to get it passed.
Probably given the nature of my profession, it's most akin in a crisis situation, but I think there are some lessons that are applied, and it's really piggybacking on some things, but being agile, like, come in with, if you're really listening, you're going to have to adjust, and you're going to have to take in what you hear. And so, expecting to be agile, and expecting to be, oh, expecting to hear what's not working or what your process in the room isn't working, meeting the needs of the community and whatever wants.
Processes sticks out to me, last year in Baltimore, we were revising our discipline policy, which is very, very contentious, because we deal with spikes and suspensions, expulsions, and community was demanding that something needed to be done. So the process was actually very, very, very smooth. What we did was, we would concentrate these town hall meetings in each of the respective regions in Baltimore, and then we would have a town hall meeting in the morning to allow parents to have that flexibility in the mornings, and we would do it again in the evening. So we were having multiple time slots for folks to come and be able to be a part of that process. But then we just didn't stop there. We had it again in another area within the same region to allow another opportunity for folks that hadn't, that weren't able to participate. Something that also worked really well was that we had, we tried to overpopulate the central office staff at every meeting, because what we wanted to do was be very intimate with all the folks that were in attendance. We wanted to small groups. They drove, they drove the discussions, they were driving the policy, but we were there to help answer questions, and it was like one to five or one to four, where we would break up. And it worked really well, because it wasn't just from one person in the whole forum. We had a lot of central office and school-based support that was in attendance to be able to reduce, you know, the, to reduce the number of personnel to parents, if that makes any sense. Which they felt that was really neat, that they had their own concentrated space while working on their plans, and we were there to help answer any questions that they had without driving the conversation. So that was a real community process, and they appreciated that.
Thank you.
Is it me? So a lot of things have already been said. I engage in a lot of community organizing and community engagement, and I, just things I would say I would add is, I've seen it be successful when people have an opportunity to get to know each other, so it's not just an anonymous exercise that you just happen to be at the same table with somebody, but really, you're understanding what's motivating for them to be engaged and what's driving them, so that more of a personal understanding why people are there personally. Another thing is, you know, skilled facilitation versus speaking at people. When the first part of the exercise is agreeing on what you have in common, so then you're not, I mean, so that's settled, like why you're there, what you're trying to accomplish. And something that I've seen is when you figure out what people's unique talents are that you don't know, like whether they can sing, or, you know, like they're great, you know, whatever people's skills are that they bring to the table, how they can, like, come and show up in their best self, or the thing that they can contribute to most to the group, and just what power that brings to the larger action.
Right, so kind of balance there between what are the things that people share and getting to know that way, and then what are the things that make people uniquely contributors to the?
Yeah, so if you have a whole group of people, like, you're bound to have all sets of skills and talents and expertise, and so figuring out, like, having a skilled facilitator or engagement will bring that out in the group, versus you just have, like, the five people who are good at that actually do the whole exercise and plan, because they're the people that do that, and the other, you know, 25 people just sort of sitting back and observing.
Right, yeah, great, thank you.
Well, there's been a couple of community engagement processes that I have thought have been, that have gone really well. One of them was where we were looking at building a new elementary school. And so what we did is, we actually had the architects go in and present to the students, and then we had different types of equipment and furniture and different designs that the students could look at, and the students actually provided us feedback on different types of learning environments that were best suited for them and things that they would recommend. And then another process where then we brought a group of students with us in one of our strategic planning processes, is we allowed people to provide input in the best ways that they knew how. So there were different beautiful pictures on the wall for students or different adults, especially like adults with disabilities. They were able to draw some pictures of things that would be more accommodating for them, or something that would draw them to the school. And then we also had parents participate in that. And it was really nice, because it wasn't as much a list of things as it was visual, and it really, we really connected more of their senses to it. You know, like, what would it smell like, what would it feel like, what would you hear? And so I thought that that was a really great strategy to include. And the kids were amazing, because, I mean, with the exception of them wanting a slide from the second floor to the first floor, which we all thought was awesome.
Not a bad idea.
The risk manager was not too thrilled with it, but, but other than that, they were right on. I mean, it was, it was really good.
Passing time at Lincoln.
Yes, exactly. It was this really cool, it was amazing.
Need a new risk manager.
Couple of things in my experience at PPS, we used to do a parent leadership conference every year, and the first year we did it, it was all white, middle and upper class, and the second year wasn't much different, but by the third year, we had figured out our contacts, and it became the most diverse parent gathering easily. I think the last one, we did, 45% of the parents in attendance were not native English speakers, so it was incredibly diverse and had great workshops. And secondly, we did a parent involvement assessment. So we had parents creating a survey tool that was probably too long, but we still got 1,200 online responses and some in-person written responses as well. And we also did at least 20 focus groups in all the major languages, and the SPIAC and the TAGAC and our different advisory groups engaged in that. And we were at 12 different schools, mostly Title I, but we had a little bit of a mix of non-Titel I schools as well. So we, we got a really good, diverse mix, and again, more commonalities than not across the board in terms of how parents felt about how welcome they felt in their schools, what kind of interaction they had with teachers around what can I do to help my students succeed, how is communication, those kinds of big things.
Was there a particular, as you mentioned, the parent leadership group, by the third year, you were getting a much more diverse group of parents. Was there a particular strategy that you developed to make sure that would happen?
It was just doing more contact ahead of time in the community and finding people who could really do turnout. So we found, PPS used to have family outreach coordinators, so, you know, one of them could, would go around with a van and make sure we had three van loads of Somali parents there. So we, we found, and who would bring migrant parents. So it was finding those contacts, building those relationships. Some schools were often a better way to connect with parents than the principal or the PTA. So, yeah, it was just kind of learning what worked and keeping and building those relationships.
Yeah, yeah, we went to what you were saying.
And when we did focus groups, it was food, childcare, gift certificates to Fred Meyer, something like that, so those kind of things. And then, again, props, but stand back.
Yeah, great, thank you. Rosanne?
So I think similar things have been said. I think back to when the dual-language immersion department, when I worked in that particular department, we were changing or opening a new permanent immersion program, and the idea was to reach out to our native families to give their students access to that program. We knew they were in the system, but we knew they weren't accessing them. So we did the usual outreach and did not hear from those families, and so instead, we just contacted the people who worked with the families and asked them, "What do we do?" Instead of just trying to prescribe our usual, we just asked. And we were led to reach out, there was a church in the area that does a lot of work along that area of town, and they told us where to have the meetings, you know, which is off-site, and the usual childcare and food, but outreach was through postcards along 82nd Avenue, the Jade Corridor, just, you know, stocking stores, things like that. And we, it was a completely different experience at that point. We just, our next meeting was almost all native Chinese speakers, that they would not have shown up.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. Tiffany?
A lot of what people have said already about providing childcare and food, I've seen it work where, for example, at Metro, they actually pay a community-based organization through a contract to help engage and bring together people, and they also get a stipend. But that's similar to what people have said, so what I was thinking of is trying to engage, it wasn't the community, but it was employees that were pretty low morale, and these were childcare, health protective services workers decades ago, and I remember going to talk to them, and they didn't want to be there, and just being able to acknowledge their, what their life was like, what their troubles were, and I just went in and said, you know, "Thank you so much for, you have some of the most important jobs ever, and I just thank you." And you could tell they all just, they were so appreciative to be acknowledged, or what they'd been through. So if that could be translated to really being able to hear and acknowledge what our community members are going through, I think that would go a long way.
Thank you.
Going, I've been through many community processes, and going into the neighborhoods where the people that you want to speak to are, instead of having them come to you, but really going out to the neighborhood. And then, for instance, we did some budget meetings, that we ran them in Spanish, and we worked with a bilingual liaison in the school to tell the parents to come, because if we told them, it was, they wouldn't come, but if their persons they're used to working with on a regular basis would tell them that we wanted to hear from them and hear their voices, then they would come. And again, food and childcare, for sure. Also, we're just watching the reaction of the Board and Budget Committee members that didn't speak Spanish, and we ran the meetings, and they had little earbuds in to listen to the translation, and they realized how hard it is to participate in another language, so it was also a learning experience for them about the delay factor. And so when you expect people to participate, if they have the delay factor, they can't really participate.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
So I was a youth organizer for a few years, and, so we did a lot of work, obviously organizing young people, but it was around changing policies and whatnot at the city level. So this intergenerational partnership between young people and, I guess, adults, and really creating an equal partnership was really important. You know, I think one of the biggest lessons learned in that process was, you know, young people are not dependent on the past, right? Because they're always kind of thinking about the future and what's next and what's bigger, and it's really hard for adults to convince them of one thing, right? Like, you know, "We've always done it this way," and they're like, "And what?" You know, and so.
How'd that work out for you?
Right, exactly. And so, you know, so having young people at the table, you know, really as equal partners and leading the conversation was really important to, you know, to shape, to shape the city's strategic plan and a lot of policies. And I think the conversation would have been different if it just been adults that, you know, one are always in the meetings, and two are always kind of involved in the process anyways.
What kinds of things did you do to make it feel like it was equal, that it was an equal?
Yeah, so the students were, or the young people were the ones actually doing invitations, leading the efforts, first to speak, you know, facilitating conversations. I think what was interesting for all of us was, for, as adults, right, was like, how do you, you know, release some of that power that you have? Whether it's perceived power, because you're older means you're wiser. And so I think it was a challenge for a lot of people, and there were contentious moments, but I think overall, it was, you know, young people really owning their own story and their own narrative, and owning that the future is their present, right? And what does that look like? And so, especially when you were convincing elected officials about that, right? Because they were, the elected officials, frankly, were concerned about two years from now and what gets them elected, and young people didn't care about that. They cared about how do they make, how do they make sure that their community is thriving? How do their parents and family members get out of intergenerational poverty? And so I think a lot of it, you know, it was really fascinating, because a lot of times, the young people were really passionate to the point where, you know, they shut down meetings and they did a lot of those things, but it came from a point where it was a lot of frustration in the adult. But it came from a point where it was a lot of frustration in the adults in the room, right? Wanting to keep status quo and, and whatnot. So I think young people really being, playing a very pivotal, you know, forward-thinking role and, and prominent role is what's going to make, I think, the difference between, you know, in any, you know, engagement, any community engagement. But obviously for a school system, you know, even more important.
Yeah, great, thank you. I guess when I, I echo a lot of the comments that were, et cetera, already. I guess when I think about engagement, I think not only about sort of getting people to the table, but what the entire experience while they're at the table. And so two things come to mind. I think that where I've seen a lot of success is when processes are really mindful of the different learning, communication, sort of like how people take in information, how they process information. And provides a lot of opportunities for movement, for change, just sort of, just thinking about like how adults and other, and young people learn and take in information and time of day and just sort of thinking about that experience. I think the other thing is, you know, I'm pretty cognizant of sort of like in-group, out-group and sort of how it's really important to have facilitation that helps people not only sort of tolerate difference or sort of identify difference, but really can help groups of people move through difference and sort of really respect and understand the different perspectives. And to give time and space for, for those conversations to happen. But also to really think thoughtfully about the experience, about how do you, how do you sort of incorporate the different perspectives and really help sort of the group come to really respect those differences? And, you know, they may not be able to come to agreement or build absolute consensus, but that there's, that there's like a rich respect and really robust discussion in a way that makes people feel really, really good about their contribution to the process.
Yeah, this is really important. I'm curious, is there any strategies that you, that you, you know, that you would say that's a really good way of helping people to move? Do something with that difference, do something creative with that.
Well, I would say that I've seen, I mean, so most recently, I would say that my experience with the coalitions of communities of color, I think that they work really well. There's like a, there's an annual convening of their leadership programs. It has seven cultural communities and sort of varying levels of leadership, very young people, folks who are more seasoned. And sort of like, a lot of times they'll have sessions where they're coming to agreement about like a legislative agenda or sort of advocacy priorities. And that's where I, I think that because, and Julia mentioned this earlier, about how important it is to have that sort of time to like build respect and relationship. I've seen that work really well. So that, that sort of pre-work that you do with groups to sort of say like, hi, my name's Danny, your name's Louise. Like, you know, what's your favorite whatever? And, you know, oh, that's really interesting, like that, sort of group relationship time, I've seen pay really big dividends when it's like, no, that's the worst restaurant to go to, like this is the best restaurant, you know? And to be able to kind of have that conversation and disagree, but with a lot of respect.
Well, a lot of my experience has resided inside of the instructional corps for many years now. And so it's about teaching and learning, developing adult capacity, building agency, et cetera. And so the most powerful and most valid experiences for me have been where the discourse is not defined by, or led by the hierarchy, but by the expertise in the space. And so it's about facilitating it so that it allows for that expertise to rise and it not become dependent on those with positional authority to define what that should look like. But those who have the, the knowledge and experience to actually articulate what that could look like.
Sharon, Sharon Reese. You're part of that. Your timeout was over at ten AM.
I didn't even say anything.
I'm in trouble.
I'm working hard back here.
So the question is, what has worked well? You've had the experience of community engagement. Any particular sort of things that you would, you would want to share, thoughts on words? I love that you're smiling all the way through that, even though you're staggering eyes. Yeah, I'll return to the first deal later.
My best, honestly, I'm not sure I've had a good experience with community involvement. I think a lot of people already said examples of things that I value as well.
All right. And I'm just going to ask, can you?
Well, I've, I've been in a few different processes and I'll make this short. But some of the things that have stuck out to me as most valuable is when you set the standard for the space. So for example, in one of the sessions that I've been in, the facilitators made sure that when anyone got a chance to speak, they used I-statements instead of overgeneralizing or speaking for other groups of people. Because frankly, no one perspective represents the whole. And the other thing is creating spaces for people to process, because there's going to be a lot of information that's, that we're absorbing. And so being able to unpack that and, you know.
Yeah, attention to the rhythm of your work. Great, thank you. So thank you all for, for sharing those experiences of the things that have worked really well. I know it's often tempting to go to the places where it hasn't worked really well, but we wanted to keep you at this point into the things that worked well. And there's some really, obviously some really clear themes across the things that, that everybody has shared, as well as some really great suggestions. Sonia, is there anything that you wanted to, sorry, I just waited till you were drinking. I was just waiting on purpose. Is there anything that you wanted to reflect on or add to that?
No.
Okay. So in the interest of asking you to maybe stand up and move around a little bit, because we're, it's the end of the day and it's very warm in this room. We want to now start thinking about just mapping some stakeholder groups. So sort of getting everything out on a piece of paper so we can really get a sense of who, who is in, when we say community, it's a word that we use a lot and sort of we want to get into, well, who are we talking about? And what are all the sort of the different flavors and different colors that we are talking about in, under this word, community? So we have started a very, very brief list over here and it's color-coded. I can't read it from there, so I'm going to move it in. So in the green and sort of teal color scheme, we've got students. And so we've broken out a couple of, we have a couple of events here, so we know that Nick has a student leadership conference coming up. So we just wanted to flag that. So this, it's going to be a combination of groups that we know we want to reach out to, using some of the strategies that were shared here, what groups we want to make sure we reach out to so that we don't miss people. But also maybe events that are coming up that we might want to tap into as well. So we've got a couple of student leadership events up here as well. And then we have community groups, so this is probably going to be one of our biggest areas in the orange over here. Some of them are up here by name, some of the CBOs. Internal PPS in the yellow, so people who are doing the work but not in the schools. And then educators and school staff, so that's everybody on the school sites doing the work to support students every day. And then parents and families down here in the pink. And other learning organizations, we just have the placeholder there, but that would be people like the formal ones, like museums, zoos, science museums, whatever. But there might be other kinds of learning organizations that you know of in the community that you would think, we should reach out to these people, we should make sure that they know there's a meeting coming up. Because we really want them to sort of, either to come along themselves or to make sure that their network of people know about this so they can come. So what I'm going to suggest you do is just.
Can you, can you read some of those smaller ones out loud, just as like examples?
Examples, yes. So under parents and families, so we have some of the language-related families. We've got the Somali-speaking families or the Russian-speaking families. But we've also got some of those parent advisory groups, like decoding dyslexia, the Head Start Advisory Committee, so we put them with the parents and families group. You may feel they should be somewhere else, but that's where they are right now. And then here we've got Naya, Playworks, Urban League, groups like that. So what I'd like you to do is just come up and have a look at these and then add. So we're just going to take a little bit of time just to add names. So specific groups that aren't up here yet, on here, using the right color. That's the key part. Otherwise we'll get very confused. So there's, everybody should have a Sharpie if you don't, let me know. And let's post it on the table. But go up and have a look. If people write the same ones, that's fine, but if they're in every town.
I never get access to a Sharpie. Do you want to take those? Really? Well, because where's the outlet? Yes, every night. Oh my God, it's a lifesaver. Because otherwise, I'm, otherwise I'm running around asking them. Everybody in my family has one now, because they all wanted to borrow it. And I was just like, no.
Are you really?
Because then you're not running around looking for those. So you're just taking all of them. I'm working on my.
No wonder I can never find you. Look at your calendar. Oh, mine's worse than that. Isn't it?
Yeah.
Really? No, she knows where I'm at.
Who's book this is? Is this your answer?
The one who looked like, like she could run through the signs. Sometimes.
I know, I was just saying, what's that?
Sometimes it's like that. It depends on the day.
Really? This is your opportunity to add. It's a lot of groups. Oh, Claire. Ever since I got back to my kitchen. Why did it ruin my sharing? And I know that, but I called the Gretchen. It's like a party. Like my invitation list. I don't know if it's just like I need to do something like speaking at. I can't remember another name anymore. That has happened to me, I admit. Well, it doesn't carry on here to get over a hundred percent. So you see me looking at your website. Camille, Camille. My friend's little muscles weren't tense. I thought that your name, Jonathan, he told me about you. And then for a minute, I thought that your name was. Yeah, no, I realize I never.
That's pretty antisocial. There's so many. What's, what's PBA? Harlem Men's Alliance! No, but we said that at the same time.
I can't use my kid ever again. I think it's just the, the computer.
That wouldn't. I mean, it doesn't, I'm, I guess I'm. Because I, I use a laptop. I don't have a, a natural. Do you need help?
What time do we start?
We started, what time do we need to start? Seven forty-five or eight?
Seven forty-five, so we need to be done at nine forty-five.
Chair? No, it's a two-hour session. It's on the agenda, didn't she say that on Saturday?
Seven fifty-five.
That was an easy task. That's why I said.
All right, we have two more assignments for you on this area. This might get really confusing and messy. What we'd like you to do is when you look at this set of names of potential community stakeholders, we'd like you to identify some that seem like really natural partners or particular kinds of allies to one another. And take a Sharpie and being very careful not to draw on the wall, draw a line between them so we can see that there's a, a sort of a natural affinity there.
To what end? Could we stick them together?
Um, we want to keep them in there because they might not be, they might cross, yeah, they might, they might sort of go right across.
Why are we doing that?
So we're doing this partly because we want to see, are there groups that we might want to bring together? For, we might want to do a meeting that we bring them together? Or is there a group that might be almost like a gateway to another group or something like that? So just trying to see if there's any of those natural alliances that we might want to think about.
I'm running out of ideas. So. Julia, I. Number what? I've had enough of her. Thanks for your help, Jonathan, Camille had to do the whole thing. I think the second one.
The only thing I would say is we not have, when you had us. You have to research this to be able to do this, to create the protocol, which was, you couldn't look at. You did not have access on the computer.
Remind me more about.
That, so it's already addressed.
So what I want to do is.
Were you supposed to do that?
Okay, so you can press one minute to draw those connections to show any natural alliances.
I haven't believed, there's chance, though. But the thing, I have people who do know that I solved it. Stephanie, you're being recorded.
Spike, have your attention please. One last instruction for the post-it area. Using any colored dot on the table, please put some dots on any of the post-its. Please put some dots on any of the post-its that represent the group that we have traditionally, has been traditionally kind of not connected with or overlooked. Or any groups that you think have been sort of underserved in terms of GPS connecting with them.
Is there any, is there any method to the dots?
No color coding there.
Is it for the under.
No.
I will send the yellow ones.
On our dots, what are we getting?
I didn't have to refer to the.
Supposed to put a dot on the groups that have not have been underrepresented. So many ways are new.
Where are they?
We've been underrepresented.
Take your pictures. Evidence, evidence is good.
Of what?
About, about the off-taste behavior of the team.
Oh, yes, the executive leadership.
This is not.
You know this camera, this camera hatcher.
You're right.
The camera. I don't know, this vision, I don't know, I don't think. I'm attacking the superintendent. And she's like, all of that.
Communities that we haven't served well.
But I don't understand.
Did you just say stuffy?
Yeah, and the remarks that she.
Off-taste.
Off-taste behavior.
Oh, boy. See, I'm just saying like that. How's your presentation coming?
Oh, how's my PowerPoint? Well. You were the only one that's.
Has the.
I was just like. Because guess what I learned today?
Tell me.
I learned quicker.
With the pictures?
Yeah. Okay, because you want to see what my experience is. One.
Oh, yeah.
We have two thousand students that are.
A huge group, it's growing.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one, too.
The communities that we have not served well. Or that we don't mix with easily.
And then I don't know, do you guys have a way to system? It's Raphael House.
I said forty, that was a long one. Because that was, that was like, really. What's Raphael House? It's a battered women's.
Oh, battered women's.
Don't they do more than that, Raphael House?
Uh.
They do children too. Some women with women, their mom.
Yeah.
Looks so disingenuous.
But no dots. Is there a lot, is there a lot of specific groups that represent for our connected to the. Think about these.
And then I just go. Is there anything you'd like me to add?
Oh, board members.
Nice.
How are we? Excuse me.
Can I ask this question? Or not?
Post-its up, these come down.
I don't think there's a map for this. This isn't a presidency.
Well, since it was a tall ancient.
Is that just PPS or is that?
Boy, just go off, Mike.
I was, um, I don't know. Uh, but they're going to be.
I was just going to see everybody. And I should spend some. See what people are working on.
You're laughing. Is that in the crane or?
Pass the coffee.
Is that LA or Louisiana?
I think you said St.
Thank you. Very good.
So we went to.
What was the name of the place?
Science.
Maybe one more minute on that, and I come back to sit down.
Jonathan. For, for, for. There, no, it took it to the scientific instrument manufacturer. We went to see this science manufacturing company. And they had a slide from their second floor to their first.
Science instrument manufacturer?
Taking the slide.
He's like, now we're going down, and he jumps in, and I didn't know where it was going. I'm like, so it's a lie.
Where'd he go?
They can do.
Veneer. Got a feeling there. Veneer, veneer.
Very. Really, that's in Beaver. Yeah, they're really cool. Great. They've been big.
You represent, who represents?
Yeah. Gave us the full tour and showed us. Right, right. Yeah, did they live segue? Was there a reputation segue? Had a room where you could just.
Yeah.
Okay, so before we transition to the next piece, I just want to ask if anybody has any particular reflections they want to make about either names or groups that were added or the distribution of the dots maybe? Any thoughts, comments, reflections about that?
There's a lot up there.
There's a lot up there, right? It seems like there's more.
Going to take us six years.
More things with dots than without, almost.
Well, I think it's interesting, there's fewer dots on the right side. Because those are groups that either engage us.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I think there's a number of other dots that could go up there. If we're talking about groups that we haven't engaged in some kind of input process, there's. I think there's. I think there's, oh, I think there's, there's a number of other groups up there that deserve a dot that we've never really engaged in whatever kind of process.
Okay. So.
It's interesting, I mean, to that point about why there are dots kind of in the middle or, it feels like there's dots with the individuals versus the institutions, right? And so, so I think a lot of us are thinking a lot about that person that needs to be in the room versus that organization that needs to be in the room.
Well, because that's, that's the common ingredient typically for inauthentic or unsuccessful community engagement, which is just like boom, 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 here's five stakeholder groups and you're done.
Right.
As opposed to really finding the people.
I'm thinking when you asked your question earlier and now this of a certain experience, we had gathered, we had just been awarded a federal Promise Neighborhood Grant, thirty-five million. Two hundred people showed up at the first meeting, like, who's going to be in it for me? And a lot of the conversations started to focus on sort of what the objective and the guiding principles were, like, what, and being very student-focused, like, what were the, what were the, what were the efforts or the strategies, evidence-based, that were going to promote improved outcomes for kids? Health, education, housing, whatever it was. And so, and then the conversations would lead over a series of meetings over, and who could provide that? Right? So the meetings quickly went from two hundred to a hundred to fifty to twenty and got implemented really successfully, right? But because people realized that they weren't really going to be able to have that kind of an impact, they just were in it for different reasons initially. And so who gets sort of a voice and an input in stating sort of what the game plan is going to be?
Right. But if you'd had those twenty people at the beginning, would that change the process and the outcome?
Um, I think so, because it made them accountable to really saying what it is that they could contribute to the effort versus just having it be given.
Yeah.
So, yeah, probably.
Yeah, yeah. Julie, were you going to say something? I think you sensed that you might be wanting to say something.
Me?
Julie.
Oh, mm-hmm. Nope, thank you. Sorry.
I mean, I can kind of speak to what Jonathan was saying, like, in the middle. I think especially when I was putting some of the post-it notes up and the stickers, I think we all, especially with students and parents and families, I think we all, when we're putting those specific ones up, we have, like, for lack of a better term, the raw image of someone we know or someone we've heard of that is part of those groups or has dealt with something, should I say? So I think those are, I mean, the groups are really important to all of us and kind of putting the corporations and larger organizations aside. I mean, we all have those individuals that we know of are part of those, so.
Right, yeah. I don't know, I guess I did, I was just thinking about that. I didn't necessarily think of individuals, but our communities and those language communities. But it's interesting that there's the most dots around, well, not the most, but a lot around families and who are, who we serve and are we serving them well? And how do we engage this broader community that we say we're not? So it's just, yeah. It's just interesting to have a visual of, hmm, who have we been engaging with?
What's fact? Fact is a parent coalition for parents of students with disabilities.
So it's interesting that a lot of the groups and organizations up there tend to be sort of advocacy-oriented, community organizing, and we're talking about a visioning process and preparing students for something, we're not quite clear what that's going to look like. I don't know if we've captured, well, who are those industry leaders? You know, who are those folks in this region that we'd be preparing kids for? Is it important to ask those people what we should be preparing students for? I'm just wondering.
Yeah, yeah. That's a great question.
Well, higher ed, we have higher ed, but not like employers and.
Because their visioning process is a lot further along than ours?
Yeah.
Or the Oregon Software Association or.
Yeah. So it was like the.
Biotech Association or.
Futures.
Right, who are those, who are those industry leaders to say, here's where we see our industry going and what kind of skills and dispositions we're going to need from your graduates?
Especially all the ones that are going outside Oregon to hire. But we don't have a specific area that's like business partners.
But we do generally in our stakeholder list.
In the community section, there's a number of references to business groups.
To me, this is always call it out.
They could break it out separately.
Yeah.
Industry leaders is different.
Right. Yes, I do like that concept, the industry leaders and what industries we're not doing.
Great, thank you, Scott.
I was just reflecting on, because I've been a part of planning so many of these, both around visioning and for other purposes. And it just is making me think about the different times we might do outreach because my experience in Oregon, especially when we've lost so much in our public schools, is over and over again, people just restate what we've lost versus inventing it new. So it seems like there might be times in this process when we really want to hear, even outside of education, because sometimes, I mean, frankly, higher ed and the way teachers are getting prepared in some places is not supervisionary. Right? We're always having to now educate them once we hire them. And so, like, how do we get out there far enough? Are not going to be the same people that we have all the red dots on, right? They're going to tell us what they need right now because they don't have it for the most part? That's been my experience. So it seems like there has to be like different parts to this process because we want to hear those voices too. But when you're developing a vision that's for many years into the future, you have to have those people that are every day looking out there.
Right, yeah.
Which aren't even us.
I think this also connects to something that you had said earlier about the multiple, or the longitude and orientation, right? Because it's possibly true that the people with the dots on right now might have a lot of need around what is needed right now and want to share about that. And there might be another group of people who are thinking about the future every day. And at the beginning, there might be something of a delta between those two groups. But ideally, as time goes on, all of those people with dots are actually contributing to crafting the futures they want together, right? So that this kind of longitude and orientation says, let's keep coming back, let's keep coming back, let's, let's sort of take this conversation further. So I feel like there's a really interesting connection between what you had said earlier and the conversation right now. Did you notice? My thing's off something. Okay, maybe in a backseat, you might see.
They were there, yeah.
So. One thing I just wanted to notice as well is that, obviously, this is, the perceptions of this group tonight, we're sort of, we're sort of pull all this stuff up. And sometimes it's really helpful just to make a visual of what we're thinking and then to look at it, and as somebody said earlier, it's kind of interesting to stand back then and see, oh, look, students and parents and families, these are the people that we feel we're not, we're not connecting with enough. So that's, you know, that's something we can sort of plan for, right? We can sort of, taking some of the wisdom from earlier, we can start thinking about, how do we remedy that? But I think this is also going to be, you know, we want to do some, several rounds of community meetings starting in the, in the new year. So this is not the only time for us to have this conversation. So I think it would be good to let this, to mold this over a little bit and then to keep sort of thinking about this group and how, what are the different ways we want to reach out to different groups of people? Some will be in the guiding coalition and then there'll be some different kinds of community meetings. We want to talk a little bit later about what those might look like. We're just at a very high level at this stage. But I just wanted to sort of flag that let's, let's sort of keep thinking about this piece as well. It's not the one, the one opportunity to do that.
No, I was just going to say, did we fail in the exercise about drawing the connecting lines?
There are some.
Maybe this is all data, right? There's not that many that are interesting. And it may be that there are.
Or that they're all there.
It may be that you come back tomorrow and think, oh, you know what? There's a couple of things there I would have drawn, and I just didn't.
I think it was more likely that people just didn't do the exercise. Yeah.
Okay, so we have. Just over half an hour left. So what we want to talk about now is start to think about the meetings themselves, again, at a very high level. So if, what are these community meetings are? If they have been really successful, what have they achieved and what difference has that made for PPS? So if we're sort of having this conversation in April or May, we've done several rounds of community meetings, they've gone very, very well. What have they achieved and what difference has that made for PPS? So that's the kind of question to mold, Julie.
Well, I think it's, well, what Yvonne was saying, that we've gotten past what we've lost, and that we've really been able to have the groups focus on the future.
Yeah.
And understanding kind of the industry needs in the future.
Yeah.
And how we're trying to develop.
Great.
Yeah. Been a really diverse group, sorry?
Yeah.
I think a really diverse group of individuals are connected in a longer-term way around our common, like, where we're going.
Right, okay. So that, so there's a sense that diverse groups have come together and they're really still engaged and involved in what's.
Right, it wasn't just, I went and participated at one thing, or I went to three guiding coalitions, but really a sense of, I'm part of this bigger vision and process, and I like the people I worked with, and I want to be part of that.
Along those same lines, I would say that people leave feeling like their contribution will make a difference.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not an event, and it's, it's an experience, it's sort of, well, I'm gonna say movement building, which I know is maybe a little too much, but it's an experience.
Well, let's have a movement.
Movement building. And, and people feel, yeah, that it was worthwhile, by the time they put into it, the conversations they had, they can see something come out of it, right? So that loop is closed in some way.
To echo Director Brimad's words, I mean, I think if, at the end of this process, diverse stakeholders feel ownership on the, in the end product, that is successful. I think if the community at large, whether it's elected civic, community, parents, students, et cetera, et cetera, if they feel like we are responsible for the direction of the district, or we, or for the successes of the district, or for the realization of this vision, I think that's success, right? Where we all see each other as owners of the, our own, of our collective destiny, I think is really important. Yeah, so.
So thinking about the idea of visionary ideas, it would be wonderful if the ideas were really thinking about how learning could be different. So it's not just the outcomes, but how that learning all along the way could look really different to serve kids better. More personalized, I, I don't know what it is. And, and I think that part of that is also in healthy living, social, emotional, citizenship contribution, and that that also could come from a diverse group. So I know even I tend to kind of stereotype, okay, the ones with dots are the ones who are struggling maybe. That doesn't mean there aren't people who have vision, right? So I don't know if there's a way to get such a diverse group that the things that both of you just described would happen, and that it's a bigger group, so that when we say the collective, we own that vision, that it really is rooted in this whole community, so that it's not dependent on the individuals, for example, that are here or on the board or whatever right now.
I think what's interesting, one of the things that's interesting about what you're saying is that it's not about the institution, it's about the ongoing activities within. It's not about, okay, here's, here's a document that's a strategic plan that is gonna set a course, but really, how is the experience gonna be different for kids every day and for teachers and for families? Everybody.
Yeah.
I think it's important to have a process where people acknowledge differences of opinions as well. So like, the last step might be, okay, what are the areas of agreement you've heard, what are the areas of differences that you've heard?
And I think, you know, one of the, definitely one of the design principles we'll be working with, with you is to sort of toggle between the big picture pieces and the specifics. So, and when we think about the stakeholder groups, a couple of you mentioned this earlier, it's like, in some ways, we think a lot about the groups, the advocacy groups, but we also start thinking, and somebody referenced this earlier, you start thinking now about the specifics of the people. So what will it mean for an unhoused student to graduate from PPS in ten years' time and to have had a fantastic experience and to feel set up for life? And then we wanna sort of then take that back to the big picture and say, well, what does that mean for a whole range of young people and the adults who support them? Any other comments about this piece or any other reflections right now? Okay. So I think what we wanna do now is just think, one last sort of thing about, thinking about how the meetings, you know, at a high-level sense, might look and feel. So if we want to think about sort of attributes or qualities that those meetings might have, some of them, I think, came out earlier, where we wanted to make sure they feel very welcoming to people, and there's different strategies to make sure that that is true. But what other kinds of attributes and qualities do you think the community meetings really need to have? And we can just kind of throw out, but speak loudly and not over each other, so that Sonya can hear what you're saying.
Well, I think we talked about, like, so I've heard a lot about childcare and the need in childcare, and.
Yeah.
And we've talked about, and we've heard a lot from folks about, instead of having childcare, what would it look like to engage those students? Right? If they're there, whether they're five years old or fifteen years old, or eight, whatever, whatever the age, that they're actively participating and not just sitting there doing, you know. So that's one. I think, two, the other thing that I've heard around that idea is this, this, you know, whoever the childcare provider is, has to be conscious about the diversity of our students, whether it's, you know, special needs or, or et cetera. Really being thoughtful about who's in that room, so it's not just, you know, a teenager, an intern, or someone who hasn't, who doesn't have that experience to, to be with the student for X number of hours, right? But so we have to be really thoughtful as a, as a system about who we contract for, for that service, again, and engage them, engage the students in an authentic process.
I've been wondering, like, we talked about industry leaders, how do we engage them when they might not be motivated to come to something here? So we talked about for families going to churches or the neighborhoods, but where is that for industry leaders? I don't know the answer to that. But I, I was thinking today, I was just at the, I know.
I mean, we're meeting with them at their places of work, because that's where they're at.
Right. Which is probably not a meeting that looks like a community engagement meeting.
Might be a different kind of.
Yeah, it might be a couple of people.
Where you are focused on a specific topic just to them.
Yeah.
If we can sort of develop a targeted.
Almost how we lobby legislators when, right? When there's something really important, like, we'll make a point to be in places where we know they're gonna be, or make those one-on-one appointments, right? And take somebody who really knows how to speak to them, just like our families, who we might not be able to speak to, or people who speak a different language. Right.
Director Bailey? So I, just from the perspective of somebody who's been working around economic development, workforce development for twenty-five years now, this sort of, the industry leader thing, let me tell you, the system is built to bend over backwards to try to do things for them, and it's, it'd be nice to have it be more of a two-way street. So as opposed to what do we do to cater to your needs, it's how do we engage you as corporate citizens? I, I would wanna see more of an approach like that.
So I think, I think the best way to engage them is, like, frankly, we have a lot of industry leaders who are parents of PPS, and I think they have something vested in PPS being successful. And to your point, they're gonna, part of them engaging is they modify their system. Their students or their alums. But they have some connection other than just.
Yeah.
We were talking about that today with the, the list of individuals, and, you know, a lot of people check three or four boxes, which is helpful.
I think the other thing at these meetings is really skilled facilitation, because we want that, that balance between structure and kind of letting go and seeing where this goes, to get to something we might not have thought of, thought of as, as a prompt or as an issue. And maybe we have student co-facilitators, so we have student engagement in that part of the process as well, helping to do some, I think there should be a lot of training around facilitation, that would be helpful for adults and students as well.
Is that something that students can get some kind of credit for, or, well, if they do, I don't know, if they're in the ID ship.
There's student leadership.
That would be workforce development, developing cohort of decent facilitators.
All right, so any other attributes or qualities for those, those meetings that you feel that we haven't mentioned already that would be, you wanna sort of make sure gets thrown into the conversation tonight?
I mean, I think one thing that was said at the last work, work session, what, what folks appreciated about the guiding coalition was that hands-on, communicate, like, very active participation. So as we translate the guiding coalition into the community sessions, to think about how we do series of, of engaging processes, so it doesn't become, everybody gets three minutes to speak and that's it, you know, like, what's this iterative process?
The red light's on, right?
Throughout the two, three hours that were there, right? So, again, and that's what, talking to the PBOP folks, they talked a lot about, right? So they did session, you know, like, sessions within, within, or.
Stations.
Stations, thank you. Stations within the, the room, and every station had a different activity. And so whether folks took five minutes to do it or twenty minutes to do it, they were very much a part of that process. And then, again, thinking about how you process, how you engage, I mean, it really helped differentiate a lot of the, kind of, how folks were engaging.
Yeah, and they had some interesting sort of gamification ideas.
Yeah, they also did gamification, right? So thinking about how do we gamify maybe some of this, these things?
So I'm trying to think of how to put this in a positive. The roundtables.
You said like pre.
The roundtables and the cafeteria, you know, the big cavernous cafeteria, it's just so, like, just overwhelming and, I think, really exclusionary, because like, some people totally get into that, and they're all, and the rest of the people are like, oh my God, this is like, not what I signed up for, and they're looking like to get the chair next to the exit. So somehow, like, how the room is set up, and I think stations is one piece, but it's not all sitting, I think, like, getting people standing up, and it also gives people an opportunity to stand and talk to the person next to them. There was one of our fall exercises around, I forget, was that Madison where we were moving people around? But there was an opportunity for people to stand and talk to people that they wouldn't normally talk to, and it just led to different conversations, and you're at a table stuck there.
Yeah. Yeah, right. So it seems like, it also connects to what Brenda was saying earlier, about using all those multiple sensory, you know, sort of thinking about that intentionally in the design of the session, and giving people time to get to know one another as people, and, and some space for serendipity for the things that we can't anticipate that will happen.
And I think, I think Yvonne brought it up earlier, is that balance between the airing of the grievances, which are many and are valid, can you just teach my kid to read? And how to honor that? And to, and you guys talked about creating exercises that pop you out of current reality to think about the future without denying that current reality.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, we want to be able to feel that connection, right? But they, they don't have to make a trade-off between a blissful future and a present that doesn't really get signaled. We can, we can put both into the same conversation. Yeah.
So the other thing I'd say is somehow, like, at the beginning of them, incorporate student voice. On the first day of school, it was amazing, the governor went to Madison, and she had all the reporters talking to her, and then there was these two co-presidents at, at Madison, the student body. And the reporters started talking to them, and, oh my God, it was so inspiring and just, it's like, yeah, this is, I mean, it wasn't, they, they weren't working out any talking points. So somehow bringing student voice into it, so people are there, like, realizing, like, this is what we're here for.
Yeah.
Versus, you know, starting with a, here are the rules, the facilitation, and, you know, who's what bathrooms are and stuff. I mean, getting people like, oh yeah, this, excited about the work.
Yeah. And a lot of times, especially if we're orienting around portrait of a graduate, I mean, maybe it's a graduate or someone who didn't graduate, or someone who got what he or she needed, or someone who didn't get what he or she needed.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that was a pretty inspiring portrait we heard tonight, of the Alliance student and their family's experience.
So if we want whole student participation, some students aren't gonna be able to come and participate in the ways that we think are conventional. And so if we can give some of our teachers a prompt, then the teachers could help the students create something, or they could record it on their Dyna boxes, or they could do it through a PEX communication system or something like that. But they're gonna need more time to be able to, to plan that out and to really have some thoughts around that, and to be able to get it out into a way that we would be able to understand it and, and hear it.
Yeah.
So, so that would be a nice way to have additional participation.
Yeah.
Brenda, can we, can we set up some time separately to kind of unpack that a little bit more?
Yeah.
I think it would be really fascinating for us to all. Really, understand that.
Yeah.
I mean, this is an audience variation on a theme, but in that forward-looking, we'll have students who want ways that they will, by definition, be older. There's, checking the order of this, but grounding our work, what is this, there's vision and urgency involved. So what's the, what is the path that's helping, thinking of that kind of our, our studying and the whole nature of passing, and, and what, and to build this kind of into the field? So how, how do we keep focused on how we drive that change as quickly as possible, because the longer it takes, the fewer we.
Yes. Yeah. It's a good, a really good point to keep in mind, yes.
Well, we talked a little bit today about, and I guess it's not up there as a, should be up there probably on its own sticky, the people who have opted out of our system.
Yeah.
So those kids who never come to our bigger. And, and why?
Oh, so the kids whose families made different choices.
Yeah.
Away to send.
Yeah.
I think some, I think homeschool, I think they're in.
Did it?
In charters, but I don't know about private schools.
A private school.
Or students that are on 504 plans due to anxiety and other issues that are preventing them from coming to school.
Yeah. So I think, I, I sort of wanna just come back and reiterate the importance of the point you made about making sure that we connect that sense of the, the urgent now and the future. Because I think one of the quotes that maybe we shared in the mini-session, I can't remember, but, yes, it was one of the inventors of the three horizons exercise that we did, and he sort of talked about how we're all living somebody's planned future. Like, what we're living right now is a future that somebody sort of thought through. So let's be very intentional about that, as we think about what we're, what we're sort of.
Somebody messed up the plan in practice.
I was gonna say, yes.
Okay, so we have about fifteen minutes left, and I think that one of the last things we want to sort of talk to you about tonight is to sort of think about how we, how we engage these multiple different kinds of stakeholders, some of whom maybe have been historically underserved in a variety of ways, some who typically play with PPS regularly. And what's the kind of balance of, we figure there's probably some balance of some big meetings that we can maybe get lots of different people to come to, and then some sort of targeted meetings that might be because communities won't come to a big meeting, or because they're, you know, at work all day and we have to figure out how to get into them. So when you think about. So when you think about that, so I think this, we're thinking probably a combination of big meetings and targeted meetings, it seems like the right thing to do. Because the advantage of the big meetings, I think, which is always fun, is to sort of put diverse groups of people together and see what, you know, there's always some kind of interesting magic that happens when you get different people working together and give them space to, to do that. So I don't think we want to sort of do specific meetings with every possible group we can think of. We want to have some mixing, but we know we need to do some targeted groups. So if you think about that, what feels like the right balance for you in terms of some, some big meetings around the city and who you might think might come along to those? And who are the groups that you think, no, we'll do more than this, but if you could only do three targeted meetings, who would they be with?
The ones with the most dots.
The ones with the most dots would be the targeted.
That definitely won't come to the other.
That definitely won't come. So do you think that the ones with the most dots definitely wouldn't come, and that's why they've been, or is it because the invitation hasn't been the right invitation in the past?
Maybe so.
Okay. But that might be a good sort of first step to think about the targeted meetings?
So it's the communities.
The parent.
It's the parent communities that have the most dots, so how to be effectively engaged them.
Yeah.
While being sensitive, it makes good partnerships.
Right. Right. Yeah. So finding those trusted partners that different groups of parents might come to a community organization or.
Well, also just thinking, you know, what groups may not want to be together, there's some with apologies and home countries and.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so like we didn't call out African-American families?
Yeah.
And I would put a big dot on that.
So African-American families in a, yeah, we're putting that up now.
That's the example kind of different than Somali, you know, we have to.
And I'm guessing African-American families.
There's a lot, I mean, if we're going to get that granular.
Well, we've got Phoenix families up there.
So are you asking us where we've been successful in convening some of these more underserved communities? And how would we broker that, like what would that setting look like? What, is that what your question is?
I guess what I'm sort of trying to get a sense of is, what do you feel is the, the right balance between having some big, like is it four big meetings and.
With like, with all, with all underserved.
Do we, do we do some big meetings and see who shows up and who's missing? Or do we know already that there's some groups who are not going to come there, so we make sure that we have a plan to reach out to those groups?
Well, would it be already, like, put all the parent groups that are going to need translation services, you know, I mean, so they should be kind of broken up so that we're not needing to have a whole room that every group meets, all right, different translations.
So there's a specific Russian-speaking families meeting and a specific.
I mean, it's really hard to work across too many languages.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Right. The advantage of that is then that the, the meeting can actually be run in the language, rather than people having to do the, the delay piece that was mentioned earlier, right? Yeah.
Like 40 of them.
Yeah.
So earlier today, there was some discussion about, there was, oh, thank you. So there was some discussion about organizing Big Ten meetings in a very different way. Because I frankly think that the way we've done the big meetings in the past really doesn't work for anybody.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's the usual suspects up there doing their three minutes, and we all know what the, we all know what everybody's going to say because we've all been there before. So I think it would be, if we can have some imagination around how to organize the big meetings in a way that's going to leverage the diversity in the room, the extent there is diversity, and maybe even encourage more, I think that would be the thing.
Yeah.
We've also had Big Ten meetings that were more small group oriented with, you know, reasonably well facilitated with good prompts and then.
Activities.
Report out that were pretty inclusive. The 2012 bond that you talked about, that's the way the outreach was structured, the diversity of turnout isn't there.
Right.
But it was.
People were engaged.
Yeah, it was, it was engaged, those who were there were, were engaged, but.
But, I mean, you guys, you guys were talking about like different stations.
Yeah, so, so I know someone brought up stations within a room, where we were thinking more is sort of stations throughout a school for us. So if we have six different experiences, and I just choose that number, but let's say it's a half dozen different experiences in ways and manners and environments for community members to give feedback based on activities, prompts, however the room is set up, then from a diversity standpoint, as far, as far as preferences, for how people like to or don't like to give feedback, for people's low or high comfort levels of giving that feedback, they could choose based on that. And then we scoped out translation services and all the things like that. If someone is more of that side of the scale where they can't talk enough, they could go to all six. But if they are really uncomfortable in groups or talking, whatever, and we will have something set up that we think will appeal towards them. So it's, it's a, it's a big numbers game with these Big Ten meetings. We know we're going to work really hard on the front end in the way we invite, in the way we try to engage communities, or try to work with a lot of the community-based organizations and communities of faith and others, not just to chase these groups to fill in gaps that they don't show up, but to try to appeal to them. And if we can just get some sort of iterative improvement in attendance from what we're used to from some of these groups, I think that would be successful. But what, I, you know, we defer to, to Jonathan and Sonia and Fiona on, you know, what that design exactly looks like, but as Rita said, kind of in a big picture, we're definitely talking about offering this sort of multi-layered model.
And I would say, just given our conversation again with some of the folks like PBOF, you know, they, they were very intentional about how they did the outreach to a variety, a diverse group of, of parent groups and, and parents and students, et cetera. They did everything from individual newsletters, like newsletters that went into each of the kids' backpacks, to, you know, invitations from the teachers, from, I mean, there was an array of things that they did. They used social media, they went, door knocking, I mean, there's a number of things that I think, as we think about this process, again, how do we do the, the Big Ten kind of events and get folks who are historically don't come at those, those type of meetings? And then after we've exhausted all of opportunities to engage folks at those meetings, what would it look like to do these smaller group sessions, you know, because that is the only way that we might engage a family or a community group?
Yeah. So Nick and then Yvonne, please.
So just like, kind of interjecting to, like, the council just met today and we were kind of talking about, like at our summit, for instance, we might want to get, you know, have students give feedback on PPS and what they think and et cetera, but we also talked about how some students might not feel comfortable, I mean, all the situations we're talking about here are great, but it's all conversational, and some students and parents and families might not feel comfortable having a personal conversation with someone about it. So I think having an opportunity to write down what they might want to say and stuff like that, so I think we, while this is great, we also might need another.
And we've talked.
Immediate, should I say, you know what I mean? Yeah.
Whether it's analog, whether it's they get something to fill out.
Right, yeah.
Or we have a handful of those walking around with tablets or with stations, so that's another, that's a great point. It's something else we talked about, because some people may not want to have a conversation at all, so we want to be there for them as well.
Right. Yeah, I think that's super important.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Yvonne?
So I'm just thinking of a few things. So one is I want to make sure that when we want to get diversity, that we're not just reaching out to community-based organizations that oftentimes are people who don't anymore have children in schools. Sometimes we like, they have more time. So one of the things that, we've tried different ways to do it in different districts that I've been in, but the ones I've seen have been most successful have been around really focusing on principals and teachers in schools to participate in something with parents. So like bring a parent or two with you. And so it, it's diverse because you've got staff members, you've got principals, teachers. And then in one district, principals started a competition, right? So we had some of them in schools where it, we had given the information, the facilitation work to the principal, which, who, which was the person the parents felt more comfortable with because they knew the principal. So it was principal and staff facilitating the conversation. So we were able to get a lot of feedback from schools that included parents who wouldn't typically have been there because teachers called them personally. So it was like competitions to say, you know, can every school get 10 staff members who will bring two parents each? I mean, getting that specific.
Yeah. But I kind of think that's true, I think we talked about this before a little bit, about most of the invitees for this larger guiding coalition, like if it comes from someone in particular that's connected to this, we're more likely to get people to participate.
Yeah.
Rather than just PPS invites you to give three full days of your time.
So that sounds like it's a design principle across all the different groups to have that personal connection, personal relationship somehow, however that happens. And I think, I think we can, we can definitely design sort of multiple kinds of experiences for people to go through to make sure there's, you know, it suits different ways of engagement that people like. And I think we'll, we'll definitely want to be really sort of careful about that. We also want to make sure that the, the community meetings are about input as well, they're not just about feedback. So it's about people doing some, you know, some creative thinking. So we're also thinking about how do we, how do we help people sort of, how do we prompt that as well? So how do we help people think about the, the day-to-day concerns and have a space for that, but how do we also help them do the dreaming and the imagining piece that we want to have happen as well? But I think the, one of the key things is going to be, how do we, how do we really make this so inviting that a lot of people want to come in because it's going to be better, obviously, the more people we can get to, to come to those meetings? So I think there's been lots of really interesting and useful comments about how that invitation process might work, with the different ways in which it will happen, and making sure that we signal to people that their, their, their input is valued and valuable, and that they get, they realize that something's going to come out of that afterwards. It's not just a, you know, you show up, you waste some time and nothing happens. Definitely want, not, don't want that to happen. So I know we're pretty much at time. Did I see your hand go up at the back there?
I was just going to say, I think you kind of got to there, how you word that invitation is really important for the, for the Big Ten, I mean, the oldest of the people or departments, but if you word the invitation, or, um, that invited school, I mean, okay, or even just come give me feedback, right? Like, so you're saying you want, you got the input, not feedback. Because you worded it like open house, I don't know, I'm coming, I'm not prepared. So making sure the invitation wording tells people kind of what direction they should be throwing. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Great. Thank you. Yeah.
Tell us where to go.
Yeah. That would be the comedy review of the, yes. You've been asking questions. Okay, we have one minute left, and I think everybody's really tired, and it's been a long day for all of you. So I think we should just finish a minute early. Or Rita's, we're still raring to go, too. But thank you all for your time. We'll just keep the conversation going? Yes, thank you.
Do you want to ask a little comment?
Oh, yes. Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Do you have any public comment?
She just gave it.
Okay.
Going what?
Oh, I'm a Dublin. Right. My comment is.
Name, please.
Though this is Luke David Crandall, though this is a blue-sky exercise, there are reality implementation of conditions that people need to understand that are going to constrain what they should do at stake. And I think that really needs to be changed with internal and administrative, because there's a lot of decisions that are hard to manage, that are not going to allow some stuff.
That's an important point. We want to manage expectations. Great, thank you, everyone.